It is seven o'clock and I will call the Scotten County Board of Commissioners July 1st. Please order, Mr. Crawford, his family allocation.
Let us pray. I'll follow the God of all mercies. We give you thanks now for the beauty of this day. We ask your tenure blessed upon this kind, upon this board. We pray that the decision that we made will be in the best interest of all of our citizens. And we ask that you bless this nation and bless all of our leaders in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
If you will, join with me in my celebration.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all of you here again. I'm glad to see this good crowd and we have found a person of belief with our work. Glad to have you with us. I know you don't like to be saying all that. Good to aggravate you a little bit.
What aggravates?
All right. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of you know, aye.
Aye.
Vote aye. At this time, I will open the public forum. Anybody who wants to speak, if we have one speaker that has signed up, Mr. John Edward Horn.
Yes.
Come forward, sir, and put your name and address. You have three minutes.
John Edward Horn Junior, 910-261-116. John Edward Horn, if I ask you to settle a physical property, I owe the count. I owe you three. More money than I had to borrow to pay the taxes. It's the same way for me being paid the taxes. And I'm not saying more money. It just go. Don't force me into having to borrow more money.
I think, Mr. Horn, if you're wrestling with your situation, if you look around the tax office, I was talking to this aunt, I was talking to this...
They work with you.
They work with you.
They work with me great. They have. They have.
Anything that she can do that we can do to help you, we can do.
Well, well, they helped me. We're going to start the foreclosure. Now that'd be helpful.
I can't give you an answer on that tonight. I'm sure if you talk...
Well, that's what I'm saying, well, I need to look between, I believe, the 10th of September. I need to land before the 12th. Just wait until September. I can't come but with money there, but it won't take away.
All right. Mr. Norton will answer you.
Well, I've already spoken with him that all we can do, I mean, we've, there's, he has numerous parcels and it's been going on for several years, but some parcels were turned in to the attorney and he's paid on these parcels and not paid on all parcels, he brought a lot of money. But the ones that have already been turned in is, they've got the weekend to get out of it.
And again, I'll be able to say one more faithfully. Now, if y'all give me the jump around next September, I don't know, I have a long pay to pay off, about $800, I can get that to them.
I'm sure if you know what you're...
Well.
...work with you any way you can.
Well, just let me know. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else who's been over the last nine minutes here to speak? If not, then I will serve the public forum. That's my reason. Mm-hmm? And if you talk to me in that language, but anyway, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Before we do that, Bob, I'd like to ask that we take the I to C off and put it over a small section outside of the consent agenda.
Which mail?
The I to C.
I to C?
Yeah.
Removing I to C from the approval, is that what you're saying?
Correct. And I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda, removing I to C.
All right. We heard the motion, we'll give a second.
Why are you going to do that?
Just a short. I said, you know.
I'm ready to have a second. Have a second. You want to question? All in favor of that, and I'm going to say aye.
Aye.
Vote aye. Next, I have then is tax appeal of one mill.
Do you want to do that? Do you want to do that I to C?
Yeah, you want to do that?
Yeah, it is not going to take just a minute, depending on what I wanted to ask about it, because I didn't see where it came from or how that developed or why that error I put into the C, and now I'm trying to get to it. But I guess my question is, where did it come from? And how did it get in there on the consent agenda? But is there something happened that made that become necessary?
I'll clarify that again, because I'm sure it came down to policy committee.
Is that where it came from?
This was part of a conversation that was had during the policy committee. It is not subject to an actual instance that we've had. We actually wound up having a conversation about...
On what you...
Oh, what scenarios and close sessions come out.
That's all I needed. I'm good with that, it's all making push and add that to the...
Got a motion to add C back in, do the consent agenda, give a second. All in favor of that, and I'm going to say aye.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Melvin Quick, actual deal, Brown. Thank you for being here.
I just wanted to, Bill, I was talking about my taxes going up so much, went $12,940. Tax value on place was 47 something before and then that's 60,000, below 60,000. Mr. Brown said it caught the end of value, a load to struggle with, and I went to complete session probably, I didn't get a, I begged to go in front of the other board, and I called him and that was it. He was not what it was.
Yeah, if anything, there was a little, I guess a mix-up, Mr. Quick did send in the appeal. I had taken a look at it and for whatever reason in our system, I had yet to figure it out, that he didn't get a notice, a second notice of the decision, which county's decision was being unchanged. And I talked to a lot of people, I can't remember, I talked to Doug during, during that appeal time, and on, for whatever reason, he did get a appeal, a second notice. I think he called me in May and I think we discussed it, we discussed it at the end. Had he gotten a second notice, it would have said no change in value, as county standards that value's, May was good, there was no evidence of, I think it instantly might have been done into the property, that's the biggest, biggest reason for the increase.
What kind of remark did you make?
Just from my observation, here just a new metal roof, windows, just general upkeep of the property. And that was the, that was the name I took to the county.
If I looked at what you were saying, the comparables were...
Yeah, I mean, the comparables, as far as, you know, I mean, I feel all right with that.
You wouldn't have any questions, either Mr. Quick or Mr. Brown?
So he getting penalized for improving the roof. Storm could have done it if he did it, but it's easy to go out and look at it and say, well, you want to add some more taxes to it. Storm did it, that's wrong, that's a mess. I mean, everybody in the county got paid for that.
And it affects the depreciation of the house. Makes the house last longer. Would you reduce that a thought?
How many years have been since? How many years have been since you got the right question?
I think it's about 10 years. 2010, 2011 was the, was the last I had, I'm sure. And it had gone down from there. Now, whether or not that was correct value, that was the 2010, that's, I thought it was a value. That's...
Are you saying it's going to stay like it was or it has increased?
Value increased.
Because it is, I didn't quite understand what you were saying.
I have a question. Of the 475, 600, the proud value. The roof and the windows was the reason it was, I'm hearing you're right, that's the reason the value was 47,000 because of the windows and the house and roof. You said the new roof and new windows is the reason for the value to go up?
The hundred been remarked.
Oh, okay. And you said the windows and the roof?
Yes. And I think we had, there was a, there was a wood deck that we didn't have listed and that was added also.
You know how many acres, Mr. Quick? Quick?
It's about a half.
Eight ounces.
Okay. That, that wood deck has been there for years. We just didn't have it listed on the... Is there any other comparables out here of these comparables that have...
I think a couple comparables.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying, but I'm asking, are these comparables, do these have a 22% increase like this one does or are these just...
Do they have what I saw?
This, this one has a 22% increase in the tax value. I'm asking if these comparables had the same comparable increase or is that just a value as they were?
Um, probably just the value that they were.
You don't know what they were prior, 11, we don't know the difference between 11 and 18.
The two comparables, one comparable has a current value of 64,630. They had a prior value of 41,720. The other one has a comparable price of 60, our comparable value of 69,000 and its previous value was 55,600.
And the other one that I have is, prior value was 46,000 and it's 58,000. So yes, those, a lot of the homes have been redone, I mean.
Yeah. Any crazy?
The second notice not been sent, is that what this appears to be?
The only change would have been, Tim, that the, the, being here in front of us and I, he would have been in front of the, the board.
You are sitting as the board of ENR, I can say.
And since they have already been...
I wish...
It would have been early board of ENR, had we got those...
One of the concern I have is when the acreage does not change, square footage does not change, 20% increase is, is still, I'm not saying that's not a good deal, when you don't consider anyone this, around those, a move, 20% less than...
What did Jerry?
May I ask a question?
It's not a problem, it's purely a...
Actually, after they're done, may I ask a question?
I had water damage and I had to pull my carpet up and I put a laminate back there. So...
The percent of increase of this one has nothing to do with the value. If the value is accurate, would you sell that for 60,600?
Probably so.
Okay. You know, if that's the market value, it doesn't really matter what percentage you decrease is. Another one reason is because maybe it was too low last time.
And the other two properties were low also, but Kevin, this debt was the number, I couldn't do the math quick enough to see what the average increase was of the proprietary property. I think it's somewhere around 15 to 18%, that's my quick math.
Had property not gone down in the last reevaluation, then the increase would have been... But, but we're required to look at what the January 1st value, market value is. And that's, that's where my prayers come from.
Am I, am I correct in saying that a double wide depreciates? It's, it's really hard for me now to even get insurance on my house that I can afford because it depreciates so bad.
It's tricky to understand, to double wise, understand...
Permanent, you know what the insurance company requires, what their, their value of is?
Do we have to make a decision or not?
Um, no, I don't guess you have to, I believe, I don't think you have to.
I'm just asking, because I really don't know.
County recommends that change.
We feel like if this was, the market value would be 60,000, so...
The big differences in setting the value tonight are looking for potential adjustments in valuation. Of course, it gives the homeowner closure. Also, if it winds up being pushed back and adjusted next month, tax bills would probably have already gone out or will have been sent to the printer. And once that's happened, it would wind up being, if there are changes, it would be a release, which is not a significant issue, but it would take a, the big thing of it is just going ahead and getting it, but this board can postpone it till this next meeting.
Now, the ENR, the commission board, they need to do it?
They will not, they're not scheduled to be...
They can't have a call, yeah. I mean, maybe they'll get a second notice.
Uh, well...
He won his call.
That's why y'all were seeing it.
Yeah, the commissioner says you are the board of ENR when they are not in session.
And he had a code on it and then suddenly he didn't have code to get another notice, so I'm not sure exactly what happened.
But he did call.
No, it was nothing he did, but that brings up, that's why he's having this chance right now.
If I hear what Mr. Brown is saying, whether it's here tonight, tonight, or when it comes before the ENR board, normally, I can't see his recommendation to be, to be feel like the value is fair, and that's, if that's what you're playing for.
That's clear. And there is notice appeal to, 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 to property tax commission.
I have a question to Mr. Quick. What are you asking this board to do specifically?
Well, I think, I think it should have stayed the same or I wouldn't have no problem if it went up $1,000 to say, yeah. But I just think $13,000 is out of me.
13, 1300 is what you would have, is that right?
13,000.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the actual tax, that's what I...
Normally, the ENR board would tell the way that we talk about it, make a decision to notify everybody, but we, that's the normal procedure on the ENR board.
So we don't have boards that...
I think, I think I have a little say.
We just have a body that allows us to play.
It can be appealed after the cost. There is a bill for the state that isn't, there is another, another layer of...
Well, Mr. Quick is a neighbor of mine. I think a lot of ideas, I live in two more homes on the same road, Melvin, they're, they're holding double wise. One of them is paying 62,000, 61,870, and the other is paying 64,450. Whether or not, they went up about a lot amount, but I'm, I'm thinking that all of these were valued under that, and we need, and I hope they'll, they'll throw a lot of that.
I'm not up here calling the draw.
I know you are.
I won't watch very, you know, now that's like 13,000 dollars.
Anyway, I just share that with you and the board, you know which people own the property.
Look, both of those go along, are bigger than that.
We all work together, you got something else?
I'll make a motion, if you're ready.
I'm ready.
I'll make a motion that we can reduce the value to 7,000. That takes it back off about 6%, but puts it in the range you can talk and discuss and move with this matter of aid. Second motion.
I'll get it back from 60,000.
57.
60,000, 600, 57 even.
Well, when the computer, computer may not be exactly 57 even when we make, the program arrives at the value by adjustments that you made. So it may not be exactly 50.
Yeah.
It may be 57300 or it may be 6900 or something like that.
All right. You heard the motion, it's in discussion.
I want to say.
You want to go second?
I'm in discussion.
All in favor of reducing from 60,600 to 70,000 or trying to figure close to that? Say aye.
Aye.
Vote aye.
Hi. How are you all this evening?
Good, thank you a lot.
Good, well, thank you. Hi, I'm Sharon Covington. I'm here with the Atlanta Region Office for the Census Bureau. I appreciate you having me here. I walked around back because of one big big shadow in front of the screen. Good evening, Chairman Davis, my chairman, and my manager, and all the rest of you commissioners. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm here with two of my coworkers, Peter Sebo, good stand-up, he'll raise, good stand-up. These are also two of your representatives. We are your partnership specialists, one in Carolina. There are 30 of us across the state. And the reason that we're here and wanting to present to you is because the decennial census is coming, April 1st of 2020, and we're in the engagement and education phase right now, and we're trying to get all of the 100 counties engaged and participating in the census. I don't know how many of you know this, but in 1790, that was whenever they did the very first census, and it is mandated by the Constitution. We put together a PowerPoint here for you for review, if you'd like to look at that, we'll do that, but I'm not going to read it to you. I also have some materials over here on the table, if anybody would like to get any of those. And then my contact information is at the end of the slide, at the slides. But the census is coming, the census is coming, and that's what we're here for. And the goal of our census department is we want to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. And as much as we all move around, we know how hard that is, so we're trying to engage our communities in helping with that. And with that, we are asking you to participate in this by forming a complete count committee. Mr. Robinson went to the training as well as Commissioner McCall, whenever we did that at the Lundy River Cog. And so they've received some information on this already, but each individual county, we're likely even to have a complete count committee. It's very important because over the next 10 years, 675 billion dollars over the next 10 years will be allocated out. And we want to make sure that part of that comes to Scotten County. For those of you that don't know me, I actually lived here, worked here, went to high school here, wore the kilt, marched in the parades and enjoyed my, my time here. I'm currently in Cumberland County, but whenever I found out that Scotten County was in the range that I could represent, I raised my hand and said, "Front of the line, I love Scotten County and I want to be here, I want to be here for you to help during this time and work with your complete count committee." It's important that we get good responses because at the end of the day, the money does not follow the need, the money follows the numbers. And so we need to get those numbers up. If you'll look up above, you'll see what the state of North Carolina's response rate in 2000 and 2010 were, and then you can see Scotten County and your surrounding counties, what their response rates were. The governor has put together a state commission to ensure that the information is put out about participating and getting our numbers up for the state. And the goal is 82%. And I think we can get there with your help and with the help of my partners, we will be here to do that. We need to engage lots of trusted voices in the community, and that's why I'm here, because I want to engage you to reach out to your fellow citizens, your preacher, your teachers... And the goal is eighty-two percent. And I think we can get there with your help and with the help of my partners, we will be here to do that. Uh, we need to engage lots of trusted voices in the community, and that's why I'm here, because I want to engage you to reach out to your fellow citizens, your preacher, your teachers, your librarians, the people sitting right next to you, your neighbors when you go home, because we have several targeted populations that are severely under counted. And if you'll notice on the screen, lots of them you're familiar with, children under five, that's a hard population to get age and get counted for, our veterans, our peoples with disabilities, our homeless, some of our seniors. We have, you know, these numbers that we need to bring up. I know from my research here on Scottman County, forty percent of your population is under five. Eighteen percent of your population is over sixty-five. So we want to make sure, that's twenty-five percent of your population right there that is in the under counted amount, and we want to make sure that we find ways to reach out to them. So I'm here for that. Again, Sharon Covington, you'll have my contact information. I want you to engage us, um, to be able to collect this data. The data is used in lots of ways. That's what the Census Bureau is about. We're about collecting data so that whenever your county and your elected officials are trying to receive monies or grant monies or receive an apportionment of monies, they use these census numbers to be able to justify that need. And so we collect a lot of data for that reason. And so, and these are some of the data that we collect and choose in a lot of ways. It's for your schools, it's for your roads, it's for your transportation, your social services, your emergency response, um, and the packets and some other information I have. There's fifty, over fifty ways right off that we can tell you how census data is used, but these are primarily the ones that most votes are interested in. It's also about power. It's also about allocation of your representation in the House of Representatives. And there's only four hundred and thirty-five House of Representatives, and they get divvied up based on numbers. The state of North Carolina has thirteen. In the last decennial census, South Carolina and Florida gained two additional House of Representative, um, members. Louisiana lost one. So we don't want to lose one, and we're in a position this year to gain one. And so, again, we're encouraging everyone to participate. And, and with participation comes questions. Questions as to the information that you're providing. How do we protect that? Is it confidential? Who will we share it with? And I say, right off the bat, we don't share it with any of the ABCs, the IC, FBI, the CIA, you know, any of those. The information that is collected by the Census stays with the Census. We don't sell that information. We don't give out the personal information, like your name, you know, that type of thing. It's only a representation of numbers. And to tell you how serious that is, I had to take an oath for life that the information that I receive, I will not share out. And any of you folks who are, you know, genealogists in here and like to go back and check your roots, you also know that only every seventy-two years is the information from the census released to the public for viewing. And so we got a long ways to go before our information gets out. And I'm telling you, at my age, I won't be here whenever it's seventy-two years from now when they release it. So, um, if you would, just know that we do keep that information confidential. Um, and so that will be one of the things, any of us Census folks that you share information with, it will be held quietly, confidentially. Um, and so, and with that being said, this year is the first year that we are going to try something different. We have found that people are more likely to respond if they are able to do it online, on a smartphone, on a tablet. You get more participation that way. Y'all remember, most of you, I remember the census coming in an envelope, and I had to fill out all this paper and put it back in and hope the postman picked it up on time. But now, we actually are putting out the information where you can go online or you can go onto your smartphone and complete your census data. Um, there will be a postcard sent to every registered address in the month of March 2020, and it will say that you can put in the code, you can go to the census website, put in the code, and pull up your census form that needs to be filled out. Um, now, we're not going to come track you down, but we will send folks out into the community. Um, so you're probably already seeing some people go around. They're double checking the addresses, that information we get from the GIS departments, and we're working wonderfully with them. There are also ways for you to be able to look and see what your low response areas are. Um, with the Census Bureau, we call them low response areas. I mean, it's areas that did not respond well, and they're represented, and I know it sounds a little backwards, but they're represented as high low response areas. That means those are areas that we really want to have participation in. And your complete count committee that will hopefully come out of this meeting, um, will be able to use some of the data that's from the census through the ROM application. And through the geographic partnerships. These are a few of the programs. We're able to count new construction. We're able to count new babies. So if a baby's born on March 31st, 2020, they count. Um, if they are born on April 2nd, 2020, they don't count until the next decennial census. Uh, this is a program that everyone has access to. If you go to the census.gov page, you can go to the ROM, and ROM will take you. It's a program that will bring you down to the very census tract, your area. You can see if you're in a low response area and be able to talk to your neighbors and let's get some participation out here. And that's where we're talking about those complete count committees. Um, this is just information about the commission that was put together by the governor. And the overview of the complete count committee just needs to be made up of trusted voices in your community. Anyone can participate. We can have more than one. If your church or your civic organization or your HOA or your neighborhood wants to get together and form a complete count committee to help get that word out, you know, there's nothing wrong with that. We can do that. Schools can do that. We just want to make sure to reach those low response areas and those hard to count populations because this is a way to bring money, much needed money, to this community. Your local governments, I've asked the commissioners to allow me to appear before them to ask for their cooperation and participation in the census. And like I said, you had two representatives show up at the meeting, and my understanding is that the commissioners do want to support the Census Bureau and the 2020 census. I would ask, though, that you consider doing a resolution or proclamation officially declaring your support for the census. Um, and I do have a template with some beginning words for that. Um, the governor is asking if we can just make sure, try to get that commitment from each county. That'd be wonderful. They're community-based, um, complete count committees, as I was saying. They're faith-based. The biggest thing is, right now, education and encourage and engage you, and that's what I hope I've done tonight. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Again, we do have packets that are out here that have more information. Um, and we just want you to prepare for it now. Get talking about it. Let's get the numbers. Let's figure out together how we can get those hard to count populations together. And we will support you by bringing staff members here to do training. We'll have marketing materials that'll be coming out. Um, we've spoken with the local COGS. Uh, we have a complete count committee training guide and manual included in the packets that you all received tonight. Those materials I'll be able to provide as well. And for the most part, that is about the 2020 census. I'm saying, the 2020 census is coming, it's coming, so let's get counted. And we can even put some of your neighbors and you guys to work because we are recruiting. In the state of North Carolina, we're going to hire about fifty-six hundred people for the enumeration positions. We have several other positions open. These are some that you need, area managers, field office managers, people to go out, IT managers. So if you will, go to the census.gov webpage and look for the employment tab and apply. I'd love to have you guys working with me and moving Scottman County forward. If y'all have any questions, let me know. I'll be glad to help you. My information, as well as the Atlanta Regional Office's information, and my boss lady, she's on there too. If I didn't do a good job, she wants to know about it. So please let me know how I can help you. If you have any questions. Yes, ma'am?
First of all, I'd like to say that Jason over there is way ahead of everybody, I think, because he's had his committee go off for about two months, even meeting. Uh, it's been announced in the churches, so Scottman County is certainly, you know, on the way with it. Uh, we got, you know, we still have a lot to do, but I'm saying that we have taken the initial to begin this process. But what I want to ask you is that, okay, uh, the person that come out, that go from house to house, they're just a follow-up person, right? But initially, I mean, they would have to go online to do the application, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, the people that go door-to-door, their technical name is enumerators. Um, but they would only go out to knock on the doors after the census has sent you the, the original, um, postcard. If you've knocked on online, they will see that, and about mid-March, they will send an numerator to knock on your door. Um, and we'll come three times. We'll knock on the door three times, and if you don't answer, we're going to your neighbors. And so we're going to ask them, hey, do you know them? Can we get up with them? How do we get up with them? Uh, because it's so important that everyone is counted. And I know that in this world we live in today, that it is scary to have your information out there, data is, you know, transfer, full of concern. But I can assure you that with the information that you provide to the Census Bureau, that information is protected, is confidential. And even if we do knock on your neighbor's door to ask where you are, we're not going to give all your information to your neighbor, or we're not going to, you being the neighbor, we're not going to turn around and tell him your information. But we want to count everybody in the household. If you have a college student who's away at college, but they come home and they're here during the 20th census, they get counted here. If you're active duty military and you have been deployed and your home bases in this community, you get counted here. If you live here, you get counted here. So, you know, even if you have a vacation home, wherever you are on April 1st, it's where you need to complete your census or provide your information. But if you, if you consider this home, this is home, and this is where we need to do it. And to, um, just give you a little more information, with Ms. Olson, we work with your local county GIS departments, and they provide the information, um, that, you know, is collected on all of the properties. So it's every address, every address that is listed will get one of the postcards. Not each individual person in that household, but the postcard will come to the address, and then that information is put in there. But you can still, if you're not comfortable doing it online, because I know Scottman County does have some spotty issues with broadband service. Um, if you cannot do it at your home, you know, we have the library of services, but you can also call. There's a 1-800 number you can call, and you can give them that code off of your postcard, and they will be able to pull up your census. You can do it right there. Or if you want to get it the good old-fashioned way, you know, the pen and the paper, you can still get it that way, too. It's just as long as we get that information in and get counted, and let's move Scottman County forward. Let's have some good numbers. I want to hit eighty-two percent as what, you know, is projected, but, you know, I always shoot for higher. I want a hundred, if we can do that. And I appreciate your help. Any other questions?
What is, what is the length of time that we have to respond? I mean, I know that April 1 is like a part of the day that the census begins, so if you use your part of the mail, you have a day, you have a week, you have a month, which you, you know, that goes and you go live, so to speak.
Yes, ma'am. Um, the postcards will be going out on March the 14th, I believe it is. And so between March 14th and April 1st, you have all of that time to be able to call or if you have trouble, you know, get online. We can, we can work it out. If you can't get online, you can call me. My number's on here. I'll take phone calls from anybody, and I'll help them through. But your complete count committee should also be a great resource for you because they are going to be trusted voices. And I can't say enough about Mr. Robinson participating. Whenever we met him, he and Ms. McCall both said, "Can you come? Can you come to our county? Can you talk with us? Can you give us the information? Will you be there to help us?" And I said, "Absolutely." So I do know, and yes, Ms. Olson, I know he has really been working hard, and I'm proud to partner with you. If there is anything that I can do, Jason, you, you got the number and my voicemail's fixed.
Any more questions, Governor?
Thank you for your time. I didn't mean to interrupt, and thank you, sir, for having the PowerPoint presentation for me. I appreciate it.
The governor mentioned a resolution, and you have in your packet, a resolution recognizing Scottman County as a 2020 United States Census Partner. I would agree to all of it, but I ran a parent vote to approve that resolution. It's a motion. Have a motion.
In a second.
In a second. You've gotten, all in favor of the number, aye?
Aye.
Brother one. Thank you, Governor.
Thank you. Thank you so very much for that. I appreciate it. And if I'm available, I'll be available to you. Let me know. And thank you all, and thank you guys for being here tonight. Um, I'm proud to work with y'all.
Mr. Matt McNeil.
President of the Fire Commission. You know, if you don't know me, I've been before you quite much lately. I'm Matt McNeil. I'm Chairman of the Scottman County Fire Commission. We're here tonight with two proposals you'd consider approving for the Fire Service of Scottman County. This is Chief Bill Norton, Spring Hill Fire Department. We are, have the bids on a truck to replace his bumper with Spring Hill Fire Department. The county has seven fire stations. When we get this bumper replaced, we'll replace six of them. We have one more left that will be still, um, built on the schedule that I did in 2013 when we came before the board increased the tire tax and heat with a three percent increase in flushing on trucks. He had three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that he could spend. He's got three bids. He came in under the three hundred and forty-five thousand, bought a couple thousand dollars, certainly within his budget. We changed the way the Fire Commission approves or votes on apparatus while, while I was planning it up. He had to have his specs to us in March, at the March meeting. We didn't vote. He just told us who the number was, the lowest bid on, what the other two bids were. All the members of the Fire Commission took the information home. Three months later, in June, we followed up the vote, and nobody really had any questions, but said, "Look, I've got the specs very well." And it passed unanimously with eleven running members on the Fire Commission. So now, we're bringing it to you to see if y'all will pass so we can order the truck. When he gets the new truck, which will be, what, six months, six to eight? When the new truck comes in, the bumper at Spring Hill Fire Department that he's replacing will be moved to the North Substation. And the truck, the bumper that's at the North Substation right now is a truck that is owned by Spring Hills on 83 mile. It'll go back to Spring Hill. Uh, so that's what's going to happen with this truck when it's, when we do replace it. You have any questions on the specs or whatever? Bill will be glad to answer them for you.
I do. Bill, this is listed as a pumper tanker. Is that just a, it's different, because you know, there's tankers and there's pumper, but this thing is listed as a pumper tanker. Is there some different reason in that, or is it a pumper, basically? I mean, I know they all have tanks.
A pumper tanker, it's got a whole fifteen yard down the quarter, and we can use it.
Either one, just like the old tanker, the old tankers, I call them.
That's right. You can use it anyway.
The, there's no specification, and I've just got this, so I, I fumbled through it here. There's nothing on here. It has a drop tank connection, but it doesn't show a drop tank. Is that included in this?
Drop tank's included.
That's all.
Any more questions, Bill? And I, and I would remain in legend. We accept the bid and authorize the other way to order for three hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars.
I saw a little.
Motion.
Second.
In a second, you have a discussion. All in favor of it, and I'm the thing, aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The second proposal is a funding for the fire departments. Uh, to give you just a brief oversight, Sturisal Fire Department got their tanker replaced in 2014. in 2014. The truck that replaced, the truck that replaced was a 1994 model. It's been sitting down at Stewartsville, their fire station, since. I went to Chief Jones six weeks ago, and asked him, would he be willing, this is a county-owned truck, it's not owned by Stewartsville. And I asked Chief Jones, would he be willing to let Bill have that truck to put in the North Substation? It's a diesel, and it's a bumper tanker. And it's newer than the tanker that's at the North Substation that belongs to Spring Hill Fire Department. And that tanker is gas. Chief Jones was willing, so I left it up to them to decide when. And they have made the swap, and that truck is now, is it up there now? It's hanging right there. It's getting tire fluid on it, but it's going to the North Substation. So when he gets the new truck that he just approved and puts the bumper up there, he'll have two diesels at the North Substation. And I think it will work very well, and they are using that station regularly for fire calls. Ever since we started this in 2014, when we replaced the fire truck, the pumpers, the chiefs wanted to keep the old trucks. And we have had arguments and talks at the Fire Commission meeting ever since, and nothing has ever been settled on it. So you've got a proposal in front of you, that I did myself, to try to end this and to help with the funding of the fire departments in the process. And this proposal was never seen by anybody. No fire personnel had any input yet. I did it on my own, and the first person to see it was the county manager. I went through the brother calls, sent it, emailed it to him, to see what his thoughts on it was. I met with him on June the 10th, he had a few, couple of questions for me. I met with him, he ended up agreeing that it was a good plan, and it would work. The fire trucks and this proposal are not gonna cost the taxpayers any extra money, the fire tax is there, the funds are available. And we are trying to responsibly use those funds. But keep in mind, the fire departments are volunteer, which y'all, y'all know. And the boys have to go out and to fires, they have to go out to other things, like the floods last year, and all, leave their families. And the state has come up now with all this training they have to do. So they have to leave and be gone home, two or three hours, several times a month, to do training. They don't have time, volunteer fire departments used to do fundraisers to raise a lot of their money. They don't have time anymore, you just can't ask for so much of it. But the fire fund, the fire tax, with this proposal that I've made, it will fund the thing with no problem, and it will be built in a reserve, which I'll go into in just a second about the tankers when they get replaced. But the first thing on it is that the trucks that are being replaced, the Law Hill truck that's already been replaced, the Wagon truck that has already been replaced, the Gibson truck, which hasn't come in yet, but it's been replaced, the chiefs want those trucks, the county is paying the insurance on these trucks right now. We have nine fire stations with the two substations that we've opened. So that's eighteen trucks that the county is supposed to own. But we've got three, four extra ones besides that now. So what my recommendation is, to help the fire departments, we give the trucks that are being replaced, title them to the individual fire department. They have to pay the insurance and all upkeep on those trucks. They will not get any extra funding or anything to do with those trucks. They are, they got to keep them up, they pay the insurance.
I might get a question. We went through this last year, we had to end up, you know, pay a real long hill. Now, we're not going through this again, probably.
You do what?
We paid a real long hill for a truck repair.
Yes, sir.
Killers garage.
That was fourteen hundred dollars.
Right, and I'm not, I do it again, probably. This fund will take care of stuff like this.
Yes. Well, see, the fire tax fund paid that fourteen hundred, y'all approved it, we made it do that. But that was a truck in the time that thought was going to the North Substation. And it was something that, it was a mistake, but Law Hill didn't need to suffer for that mistake, so the Fire Commission approved it, and then y'all approved it, and it was paid. But these trucks, if we title these trucks to the fire department, the fire fund is not gonna pay the insurance or upkeep on them. They're gonna have to have the money to do it. They all must feel like they can. The second thing on this proposal, and another thing on it, the two, the fire departments that have the substation, Larnburg and Spring Hill, they don't get to keep their trucks, because they're gonna rotate into the substations. Because we got to keep the substations in good trucks and good equipment to keep the ISO rating. So those two fire departments will be rotating their trucks, and they will still be owned by the county, because they're in the county's fire district. The second proposal that I made was to give each fire department a $10,000 increase in their operating expense, and they need. I know you don't have any idea of this, probably, but...
Mac, can I ask you a question right here, since you're on that line? That you're...
Our funding on them is from $36,787 a year, up to $41,267. It is based, they have a base funding that was done when the fire tax was put in in ninety-five, I think it was. And when we got the additional fire tax in 2014, they got a raise. But before that raise, the fire departments were funded, that's why they're not equal by the values in their fire district. So you've got the fire departments that, like Larnburg and Law Hill are the two highest funded, when, because of the values they have. Stewartsville is the lowest funded. But we give them the $10,000, that's equal to each fire department. And according to what the chiefs have said, that will help them tremendously in their operation. Again, the money is there, the fire fund can handle it without any problem, with I see, with what I figured on it. The third thing...
Can I ask you this question on that second item, quickly? Because I don't know if it's a wording or if you intended it this way, but it says each station will get a $10,000 operating expense increase annually.
Annually, yes.
So you're talking a $10,000 increase every year, each station?
It'll just like, Stewartsville will take them from thirty-six to forty-six thousand, that'll be their funding, every year.
Per year, and then the next year fifty-six, by reading this.
There won't be any addition, if...
So it'll be a one-time, not annually.
If later on, we need to raise it again, we'll have to come back to y'all.
Just reading this, looks like it's gonna happen every year, so, okay.
You're right. Kevin, I guess you've done the math, the fire tax fund can support all of this?
It can, and one of the caveats in there, and it's part of McDoole's plan, is looking at the status, not of the pumbers, but of the tankers, which would be replaced after the two that are currently on order, and there would be one additional bumper tanker that will be replaced. After that, actually delay the tankers, you know, put them on a longer cycle than an annual replacement. So this increase of funding would not negatively impact the ability to replace those tankers over a period of time. But they would not be annual events.
And this was part of the intended goal, increasing the fire tax? Plus, you didn't have the fund necessary to do it, Bill.
And this board has also asked for recommendations on final disposition of the existing fire trucks, as well as recommendations for how to increase funding for the fire departments, for the fire service. And we've been trying to get the Fire Commission to come back with a recommendation that they support, and this is the final. This is the recommendation that's final.
Wait a second, yes.
Yes.
McDoole mentioned fundraiser. The state says, if you're working my mom, that you cannot have but one fundraiser per year. If you have more than that, they take away some of the funds that they give you, and that's my life there. But even though they have fundraisers, you stop and think about it, and that loses the fact that these fellows spend countless hours in training, and just that's the other, they don't need to be out there, in the middle of the highway, or a force to rely on whatever, trying to collect money to keep up our budget. And I applaud you for putting this thing together.
All right, the Stewartsville tanker that we're putting off, we should have replaced it, and this Spring Hill one this year, but we don't have the funds to do it right now because of the substations. So Chief Jones had no problem in putting it off. And I told him that it didn't necessarily mean it would be a year, but when the funds are available, then we'll tell him, go ahead, start getting the specs to us, so we can do our same thing with him that we did with Bill, and get it approved. The tankers is given with sayings, that's the next thing on my sheet. We should start replacing tankers before we have a schedule next year, but we're putting them off. They're in good shape, there's no reason to replace them, so we're gonna leave them alone. And we hope that they will last four to five years before we have to start replacing them. And I had a game of disagreement there on that. When we, if we put them off for four or five years, a tanker's gonna run $300,000 when we start buying them. And the $10,000 increase for the fire departments, one tanker will pay for that for one, longer three years. So we're, we'll be still building a fund, so when the tankers do need to be replaced, we can do it. And please keep in mind that we have, I think, been pretty responsible with this money, because every truck has been paid for upfront, out of the fire fund, plus funding to fire departments. And the fire department funding, before the raise, if we get, if y'all approve the raise for them, is about, the insurance and their funding is $288,083 a year. And for seven fire departments, that's pretty reasonable. If we give them a raise, it'll be $378,083, about thirty cents. So we have, the fund will pay for that with no problem. We need, the last thing on the fore, the fire departments with these new trucks, if they have a major repair, they cost big bucks to fix now. Stewartsville had pump problems on theirs a year ago, they had spent about $6,000, that ain't come out of their operating expense. The chief told me that they got the point, they don't want them to afford to buy diesel fuel going to trucks. Because $6,000 on a $36,000 operating expense, that hurts. So what we would like to do is to start with the county-owned trucks, pay one-half of the major repairs on the trucks. And if you see down there, this would be a thousand dollars or higher. They can't go and get something done for three or four hundred and want us to pay half of it. And this is major repairs. General maintenance on the county-owned trucks, oil changes, tune-ups, air conditioning, tires, batteries, that's the fire departments, they got to pay for that out of their budget. And if, as the funds build by not having to buy the tankers, hopefully, we can pay the entire major repair bill. But to keep this, whereas there can be no argument with it, at the Fire Commission meeting, June the nineteenth, I formed a subcommittee of non-fire personnel. Chairman Davis is on it, myself, Brian Gibson, and that large member of the Fire Commission, and Joey Lewis, the county mechanic. And when I met with Kevin to go over this with him, I told him I'd like to find somebody that wasn't on the Fire Commission at all. So Joey was Kevin's recommendation. I have appointed Brian Gibson spokesman for the subcommittee, so he can bring anything to us. If a fire department has a major repair on a county-owned truck, whether we're paying half of it, or get to the point where we're paying a dollar. The subcommittee will have to look at the vendor and the bill of what's being done. And if we agree that this is legitimate, and we need to go proceed with it, fire department will go ahead and get the truck fixed. We can't keep the trucks out of service, we got to get them back in service. They'll get it fixed, they'll pay the bill. They'll present the bill to the fire subcommittee, we will go over it, we will present it to the Fire Commission. Fire Commission will vote yes or no. And if we vote yes, then we bring it to y'all for final approval. So we've got all kinds of safeguards in this fund. You are the final say-so on all of it, the money. But we're trying hard to give good service, and give these men and women in the fire service the equipment they need, and the safety gear they need, and be responsible with the taxpayers' money in the process. If you have any questions about it, I'll try and answer. I don't hear good, so I don't hear you, you may have to speak up or build on this for me, but that's pretty much the plan in a nutshell.
There's just a matter of information, there's, in the tax fund, fire fund, there's about a million and seven hundred thousand dollars. But there's three trucks that's gotta be paid out of that, so when that's all said and done, there'll only be about seven hundred thousand dollars left in the fire fund. But Mac, it's been a lot of time and a lot of effort, putting this thing together, and entertaining the public that we can accept this proposal.
Can I say one thing, Bob? Because I'm trying to put my head around the benefit, or the lack of benefit of titling trucks to departments, I'm trying to figure out why, why that would be a benefit to the department, even on insurance part, just, I mean, I understand if they paid the insurance on it, but it just seems to me like you could just better raise the bridge, but I don't, I mean, what's the benefit to do that?
Well, I think, from what I've heard, that deals y'all pressure, if I'm wrong, is they should both feel like that they own these trucks, and they, some of them, they really, they need, but they don't have enough equipment. But then on the other...
But then on the other hand, if they give an opportunity to, and Mike has alluded to, if they want to sell these trucks, they can. That's what they want to do, they belong to them. But it relieves the county of any responsibility on those things.
And the only other thing is maybe taking out that warranty.
Yeah, I, I, that was going to be what I said. I have a motion to approve this with the exception of that warrant annual.
I'll be pleased with that.
I have one, I have one question. The raise, would that be in line with county employees that you give the fire department?
Now, this is just for the total department. We fund them now, we give them anywhere from thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars a year. Who it is, this is just adding to whatever amount.
He said, and his proposal, McDougal mentioned, uh, raise.
Well, it is a raise, it's a ten thousand dollar...
It's just for operating purposes.
It's an operation sign, it has nothing to do with working out there volunteers group.
I, I thought he, when he said raise, I thought he was talking about...
No, I, I think it's for total volunteers.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion and we will correct that as one word annual. And ask the clerk to handle that and correct that and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, let me know, say aye. Other like...
I'd like to say my thanks to the county fire commission. We've been together all night and worked on this. And the success that I think that we're giving to our citizens shouldn't be commended in the county's mouth. Like you said, we may be the final word, but it's you and the fire commission that have put it in pencil and paper and delivering it forward. Thank you very much.
We very much appreciate it. Thanks, Matt, appreciate it.
I want to make sure everybody can hear me. We had a problem last week. So it is time for appointments. Um, we have received applications from three individuals to be appointed to this oil properties commission. Um, this is Laura McNeil, Mr. Frank Polaris, and Ms. Teresa Morrison. So this time I'll submit those three names to be appointed to the commission.
I'll put a motion in the second.
Second.
Motion now, second. All in favor of suing the, to the commission, if you don't like aye.
Aye.
Other like...
Our second appointment is to the Harvick Scotland County Groyer and Hymn Committee. And Ms. Mike Edge, who is our in-house one more commission clerk, has requested to be appointed to that committee so to do his name to the four points.
I'll put a motion in the second, second. All in favor, let me know, say aye.
Aye.
Other like...
In addition to that, I want to have a few comments to make about our boards. Um, I have, the last several meetings have been talking softly about wanting to get citizens engaged on all our boards. And the response is, is good. I'm ready to see the responses coming in. One point I would like to make, we have received a few applications and they don't designate with the board they want to be on. This board of commissioners is not going to randomly appoint a citizen to a board. An individual must indicate what board they wish to be appointed. And we assume that if they choose that board, it's because of their interest, their expertise, or some knowledge that they may have that makes them want to serve on that board. So a few more people that you know has, uh, requests to be appointed to a board, please designate with the board. In addition, the clerk and I have been working hard updating our list of boards and membership on the website. And hopefully by the beginning of the summer, that list will be a complete, a complete membership of when terms of tires and vacancies are going to occur. But right now, I am very pleased to announce that if you are still considering a board appointment, there are four boards that need, uh, appointed to the shore properties. The Scott County, our library board is in need of members. And Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee is in need of two members. Also, we are very much in need of having one serve on the Harvick Scotland County ETJ planning board as someone who knows that outside of the city limits of Harvick, but within miles or two, it's a positive. So think about that then. So if you live outside of the city, but you go one mile from the city limits, you can serve on that board. And we have a long time of member on that board who has to wait. So we need to replace Mr. Parker on that board, so, um, um. And our neighborhood, where you live within our city limits, very much the city limits. So please consider this information, share it with anyone. And in addition, after hearing that excellent presentation from Ms. Cogan, our court is doing an excellent job, as Ms. Elton said, in creating a complete campus committee. If you have any desire in your church or regarding any city board association that you belong to, your neighborhood, and you want to be a part of that, please let Mr. Robinson know he would like to increase that committee. And that's how we can reach that ninety-two percent goal of counting everybody that's got on the county. I can't emphasize enough how important it is. Dollars come with this. I mean, this is how dollars are allocated. And Jay, for every, did every person in the county, how much are they worth?
Sixteen hundred.
One thousand six hundred in digital. So if we don't count somebody, we're losing one thousand six hundred in digital. So if you're interested in serving on that committee, you can contact Mr. Robinson as well. Thank you for giving the, your attention on this subject.
We'll lose that sixteen fifty annual for ten years.
Very true. Uh, thank you for your interest again. Thank you for being here, Matt.
Mr. Robinson, I should have played it in the beginning, but Mr. Gibson has to be due. He's called Camp with Bunch of Youngs. Attorney is out of the city wide, I think. Six thousand, you, two, I have six.
Uh, this is one that we've had conversation with in the previous two meetings. Uh, looking at the acquisition of an easement on property for the running of a water and sewer line for the new school. Uh, it would be approximately one acre of land that we would have under permanent easement. There's a little bit more that would be under temporary easement. Uh, we have tried numerous times to reach out to the landlord. And we have not had any response. The bills that we send for property taxes are paid, but the certified letters we send to the exact same address were returned, I know. So, uh, this is the next step where we, where this board is authorizing the use of eminent domain to take an easement of property. With this, of course, we are airing the water and sewer line, so it does not significantly impact the value of the land. And this is because we have not had opportunity, but we have not had any response back from the landlord. Uh, so attorney did submit a copy of a resolution that is on the table in front of you. Uh, that would need to be approved as part of it where it basically authorizes the county manager, the accounting attorney, and any necessary staff to take operate, and to take steps to begin eminent domain.
Now, Kevin, explain it to a clerk, what you're asking for.
Uh, basically with this, uh, we're, we're making an offer to a person. And, uh, we would have, after we get send, send notice, we would have thirty days for him to respond. If not, basically, we take the amount of money that we would offer the land, we put that at corporate court's office so the landlord can draw against it. Uh, and then at that thirty days, we can actually go in and start work. And it's, as the entire eminent domain process can go through, the landlords can contest it. We can go into mediation. But basically, the big thing of it is we go into actual negotiation. But basically, this starts the clock where we can actually go on to the land and...
Is that person able or, I don't, I don't know landlord. We only let, able or mindset to do something or some older people just don't have to understand the...
I don't know. The last, the current billing address we have is in California. And it's, uh, it's being managed, it's being, uh, it's current on all taxes.
Any more questions, Kevin? All right, I'll entertain a motion then if we approve this.
I make a motion, we put a resolution of, we're fixing Scotland County and authorizing the exercise of eminent domain.
Second.
Motion now, second. Any more questions? All in favor, let me know, say aye.
Aye.
Other like...
My, my report's going to be really complicated tonight. The association's annual conference is in August. And, uh, it is, the board is required to, assuming it sends a member, required to designate a voting member. And this needs to be done by the next meeting. But if Eric, our commissioners who are already known that they are wanting to go, they would be willing to go ahead and speak up and offer to be the voting delegate, that would be fine. Yes, sir. It's in Greensboro again. And also, I believe there's actually a discount for registering this month.
I'm just not sure.
Right, I'll be in New York.
Where are you going?
You, you some peace.
John, are you going?
Well, I'll be in New York.
Ms. Betty, are you going to handle that?
This can be done at the August meeting if you...
I make that, I, uh, Carol always goes.
I usually do, you're right. I just need to set my calendar a little bit more.
And we appreciate your loyalty.
Oh, thank you.
I'll be there.
I'm sorry, Bob, I didn't know you had it. I'm so sorry. But I just, Carol will.
I, I, but anyway, we'll put that up then until, uh, August meeting. That concludes your report.
That concludes my report.
What did you say, Bob, and then hear that?
Do you have anything you'd like to share with the board?
Mr. Graham said he needed a commission on his board. Did he tell me that, Mr. Graham?
He did. He was on your board.
I mean, okay.
You want to be on the business?
Because God left, you know, God's no longer here. So what?
You want to be on?
I'm glad to help, I'm going to board. Is anybody else want to be on?
She didn't want to do it, I'm glad. I mean, I prefer our feet rather.
I mean, I love recreation. I was on there about thirty years ago, but I won't let you have this eye this time. I maybe, I do it during the next two years I'm elected.
You want to make a motion, please go ahead and take care of that if you want to make a motion.
I, I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Graham to the recreation. Is that what you're talking about?
I have a motion, make a, give a second.
Second.
Motion now, second. All in favor, let me know, say aye.
Aye.
Other like... Him, I thought you, she wasn't ready for it.
I wasn't, really.
You're not ready to volunteer ever.
I know. I know, well, I was trying to, I thought she was going to...
I'm glad you have your eye.
I said nothing.
John, Carol?
No.